Good evening and welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting of June 11th, 2019. And we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We have none.
But there is no executive session.
There is no executive session this evening.
Okay, so that would be... Okay. Any comments from the public? Which happens to be a little large, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right then, let's go on to number three, which is our celebration of learning.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please. Sorry.
You're gonna use the...
Yes.
Okay. So the school-wide Title I, which is our first one, is going to be a brief presentation from Lori Lodge and Rachel Driscoll on the upcoming changes for next year and some of the work that we've done this year to prepare for that. I'm gonna get out of the way.
Get out of the way.
It's warming up.
Really?
Yep.
Oh, there we go.
Excuse me.
Maybe. There. So I shared this, Rachel and I shared this with staff probably a couple of weeks ago now. Just the changes between what we're doing now with targeted assisted school for Title I and then what it means to go school-wide. I don't know if it's...
It says trying to connect.
What did I do?
I don't know.
Oh, it's just trying to connect.
It says, "Yeah, turn on offline sync, turn on."
I can flip through the slides anyway, but you just won't be able to see. It's not working right.
Oh, no. In the school...
What?
Where's that tech? We're being hacked.
Wow. Never had that one.
Here it goes. Perfect. Yeah, only one little problem.
Very.
Almost.
Start. Wasn't there an air conditioner over there before?
No.
It's open.
It's on.
Oh, that went to Mrs. Libby's room.
Oops, I did that wrong one.
Jeez. You just clicked the wrong one. Let's try this again. Now it's...
No, we're not.
Two blocks old, never mind.
Bear with us as we go through a couple of...
I know, technology glitches.
We should not have technology.
There we go.
Still reconnecting though. So I'll just go through. I've got, I can sort of read what's on there.
There you go.
You think?
Yay.
Sweet. So the difference is, so we explained to staff that the differences between school-wide and then targeted assisted is that when you're a school-wide school, all students can receive... Oh, it's gonna go by itself. Wow. All students can receive additional services. Whereas at a targeted assisted school, you design systems where you're identifying kids based on assessments throughout the school year. And if they're falling, you know, way below or below benchmark, then you identify those kids as being Title I program students. And then there's a whole other layer to notifying parents that they need services and setting up a program for them. Whereas with school-wide, you just say that all kids are in the title, are in the school, we have Title I services, and then we can service those kids wherever they are. So the program allows for additional support within the classroom as a model that we're gonna choose to do in the fall, and I'll go through that in a little bit here. But, so we're going from just targeting certain kids to receiving services, to having our Title I, and anybody really, any staff member can support those kids who need additional support. Also, when we're writing the grant that I'm working on now, you can merge your funds. So if you needed to use Title II funds to support the Title I program in any way, you could use that. So it allows you to write your grant in a more flexible way, and we will probably take a look at doing that, especially with Title II. If we're going to train staff to do the push-in model for literacy that we're talking about, then we can use Title II money to support the Title I program. So it allows for a little bit of flexibility in how we use our grant funds versus targeted assisted. You have to really target those funds for those particular students, and it doesn't allow for that flexibility with money. So what we're looking at, and Rachel, feel free to join in on this part of it, is that we're looking at a reading workshop model where teachers or support staff in the classroom would give an overall mini lesson to all students, and then there would be somewhat of a workshop happening where those students that might need either additional support or you can flip it and have a support staff in there working to stretch kids, to extend those students to move beyond their grade level if that's where they are, and then it allows the classroom teacher to work with the students that might need the additional support. But you can really take a look at who's in your classroom to support you during that time, what are their strengths, and then how can they support your kids? And so it really becomes a team effort on who's in the classroom and what you're doing with students. So it could look like there's teacher-directed stations, there's collaborative stations where students would be working together, there's independent work time for students to practice their skills, and then you work in that additional support station for students that might need that additional support.
We do have several teachers in the school right now who are actually teaching literacy in this model already, which is a big help for helping others come on board. It offers some good supports for everybody else who might be making more of a transition to this model.
Yeah, Patty, you use it. I don't know if you want to add anything to this or not, but...
This year, Deanna Montour and I did this kind of a model where we would have our small group, the mini lesson, and then the kids had a, they might have a game for sight words. They would be either with me or Mrs. Montour, especially the kids, and I kind of triaged them so that the kids who would go to Title I anyway were double-dipped in the classroom so they got that and classroom. The others were more independent, they might have pair reading and written piece with a partner. So, and the rotations, you know, we kept, I kept the rotations to right around 15 minutes where you just keep on moving and they, I think they really got a lot more out of it than, you know, than I would have if I wasn't using that, that model. I liked it.
So what it will look like is, this was just a sample schedule for like a K-1, 2 level. You'd have Tier 1 and Tier 2 in-class support, where Tier 1 is just your general, your foundational instruction, Tier 2 is that additional support that, that may be needed. That there's Title I support in the classroom during that time, so in K-2, it's an 80-minute block next year, which was the other thing, is getting everybody in the school with this, with a literacy block where they're not all teaching literacy K to 5 at the same time so that we can provide support K to 2 and then provide the same level of support in grades 3 through 5. So there would be the classroom teacher and then a support staff in each one of those classrooms during that time. It would also allow us during that time with additional Title I staff or another ed tech to do some pull-out with those kids that might need a Tier 3. So one of those stations could potentially be, they're gonna go out for 15 or 20 minutes and work one-on-one with somebody. So it allows for that flexibility. Same with 3 through 5. So we have two third grades next year, a fourth and a fifth, and you'll see that their literacy time is at a different 9:30 to 10:30. So they have a 60-minute literacy block. We've also talked with this group about flex grouping across grade levels if we need to. So as part of our workshop next week, it will be really looking at who are the students, where are they currently reading, what are their strengths and what are their deficits, and then can we group or flex group those kids to get their needs met when we start right away in September? And then for grades 6 through 8, what we'll look at is where are they having their current ELA block during their schedule? Can we provide support during that ELA time? And then do we look at tutorial time in the afternoon for that support time for those kids that might need it?
Title I did do some push-in through grade 6, one of the 6th grades, ELA, and then for the first time, I had two students who needed a Tier 3 in-depth intervention, and they were pulled out into my room.
So sort of our next steps, and I think some of this has already been done, is to determine the support, who's gonna be working with the K-2 cohort, who will be working with the 3, 5 cohort, because there are certain support staff that are assigned to those cohorts, so we need to take a look at who that is. Professional development with Kelly Smith is next Tuesday. We have a resource that we're gonna be using with all teachers, and they will have some planning time during that workshop day so that they can meet with their cohorts and start talking about what will the beginning of the year look like for them and to get some planning done. And then really to finalize that schedule, take a look at the data we currently have based on the spring data and start to target who are those students that will need that support right away at the beginning of the year as we start with the reading workshop. So...
Sounds like these people are pretty busy.
So do you have any questions for Rachel, for myself, for John about what our intent is with...
It sounds like a good move forward, and it sounds also like it would work into a proficiency-based learning framework very much better than the other way.
Yeah.
And I think it's great that more kids are gonna get services than are getting them now. It gives the opportunity for more kids to get services. And it's still, it still can be done with the federal funding without having to identify everybody.
Absolutely.
That's great.
Right, but that's what I was gonna ask. Why is it like an either-or thing, or you're combining both, right? You're kind of combining the school versus the targeted. You're combining.
Right, you are.
So you can do that.
Yeah, you can, but targeted really puts restrictions around how you use some of the funds, and then it has to go directly to support those programs with those identified kids, whereas school-wide...
But did schools always have this option? Like, when did this happen?
A lot of schools are school-wide in the state. There are very few targeted assisted schools now. A lot of them have moved towards the Title, the school-wide because of the flexibility.
Okay.
It's not super new, we just hadn't made the move.
Right now, I'm constricted to who have we identified for Title I. That's who I have.
Like I always knew how it was done, yeah.
Sure. I think it's important to recognize Rachel's courage and confidence moving forward because we're kind of breaking the mold on what she's done for so long, and she's been great, and Sherri Smith has been right there with her to look at a new model and be confident in working with teachers, and the teachers to look at something different. And Lori with bringing in the professional development that we're gonna have on the, on the 18th. I will say that this drove a lot, this just didn't happen overnight. We had our first conversation last fall and spent the year planning, and we actually got our schedule going, our schedule for next year. We started that in January, and we have it done. We know where everybody needs to be, and all we need to do is finish up what the duties might look like, so we're not gonna have to do any of that work in September. It's been a real good process.
Thank you very much, Lori.
Thanks, yeah, very nice.
Eighth grade graduation update.
That's just an update. That's just a pitch from me that if anybody can make it, this is, I've been a high school principal, I've worked in education quarter of a century, and I gotta tell you that the graduation, I know, and that's funny, it's like semantics, it's like the weather. Almost a half a foot of snow could be three inches, but it's been a quarter of a century for me. And I've been in a lot of graduations, and I tell you, the way they pull it off here, the middle school does all the work, holds it all together, and it's really something special. And some of you have been here, so I just wanna put out a public plug for Friday night, six p.m., the 14th, and we're gonna have 17 eighth graders, 17 eighth graders walk across the stage, and it's really special.
Nice, thank you. All right, let's move on to the next, which is employee recognition, and I'll turn it over to Andy Brazier.
All right. I've been kind of looking forward to this meeting because Mr. Ross said I could take as much time as I wanted tonight, so I'll take full advantage, so get comfortable.
You guys doing the overnight shift, don't bother my job, you're good.
Extremely pleased tonight to be able to present to you and end our school on a very positive and a very, very high note. This, tonight is an opportunity for me to recognize one of our own employees, and that employee is Mr. Will Cody. And tonight, we're recognizing Will for community spirit and outstanding service. As many, as many of you know, Will joined our maintenance team two years ago. During his time here, he has demonstrated great pride not only in his daily tasks but also in serving the staff and students. He's eager to support student events and can often be found working directly with students. His work here is second to none. Also on our maintenance team is Jim Wood. When I told Jim that we were gonna be recognizing Will tonight, he asked if he could join me in saying a few words to recognize Will. Surprise. A few years ago, like Andy said, Will joined us, and I was, I was kind of concerned, my son Josh, no, my son Josh was working here and he was leaving, and I was concerned who we're gonna get to replace Josh, because this is a team effort, and we really need a good, positive team to work together as custodians. And then when I heard that Will Cody was gonna be the replacement, he had, he had applied and then secured the position, I was kind of at ease. Not that I knew Will, because the year I started here, he went off to high school. I'd never actually met him. But I knew his dad, Dave, was, you know, an outstanding kind of guy, no matter what Andy says about him. And I knew the apple doesn't fall too far from the tree, so I was relieved that, oh, Will's gonna be joining us. But then I, I got to meet Will, and it wasn't just a good thing that, oh, this guy's gonna be joining us. I got to work with Will and find out that he's a really good guy. I mean, one of the best qualities I see in Will is he is honest, and that is a hard thing to find in today's world, an individual who's really honest, and Will is. He likes to joke around. Last summer, we had a blast, we worked hard, and we pulled pranks on each other, and he can take a joke and he can give one out, which is a good thing. Another thing I really enjoyed about Will is last year, Will went out of his way to invite me to go ice fishing, and I'm an old duffer, and young guys don't wanna hang around with guys my age. But he spent a day with me out ice fishing, and we, I caught, I caught the only fish that day. It was a good day. So that impressed me about Will. I think the funnest moment I've ever had was one that involved Will, but he wasn't actually there to see what I saw. One evening, Will accidentally forgot to replenish the toilet paper, and Mr. Noel was the beneficiary of that the next morning, and the look on his face was about the same thing as running over a hornet's nest with a lawnmower. But I loved it so much, I laughed so hard. I never laughed so hard in my life, but anyway. I think...
Did you get approval to tell that story?
Probably not. I think, well, I don't know how to say that.
Say it anyway.
I'm glad that Will is here and he's a part of our team. Unlike most young people who are leaving their hometowns to go out and make their way in the world, Will chose to stay here in Acton and invest here in Acton and be a solid part of our community. And I think that's just an upstanding young individual, and I'm glad he's part of our team. So like Jim said, roughly about the same time Will started here at the school, Will also sought out a unique opportunity to invest in Acton. With the guidance and support of his family, Three Rivers Land Trust, the Maine Farm Land Trust, Will was able to purchase Romack Orchards. Will wasted no time upon obtaining the orchid and went right to work. During the first winter, Will and his dad pruned and groomed the 750 trees in the orchid. For many of us, it would seem an insurmountable task, but for Will, it was another day at the office. Along the way, Will has made great friends. Gordon Waterman, the former owner of Romack, had built his life around the apple industry. Generations of his family had grown apples in Acton in southern Maine further back than most of us can recall. Dave Cody also worked for Mr. Waterman for many years and himself became very knowledgeable of the orchids. When Will was in high school, he had the fortunate opportunity to work for R. Kelly of Kelly Orchards. I was his mentor and taught him a lot in Will's time spent at Kelly Orchards. Between the help and teaching of seasoned apple growers and the strong support of his family, Will's dream became a reality. Within a short time, families and neighbors would enjoy recreational opportunities, including hayrides, apple picking, and scenic photo opportunities right here in Acton. Will's combination of community-based service is one of a kind. His efforts and desire to preserve what Acton values most is seen every day. In the interview conducted by WCSH Channel 6, 207, Will's grandparents described Will to a T. They first pointed out how proud they were of Will and what a hard-working, self-motivated young man Will had become. Such a huge responsibility for such a young man. Whether folks encounter Will working here at the school or whether they're enjoying a hayride, it's clear that Will loves Acton. Many consider Acton the focal point of our community, and it really is for so many of us. For Will, he has carved out a recreational focal point in Acton. Amazingly, Will is at the center of both. Tonight, it's a privilege and an honor on behalf of the Acton School and the community of Acton to present Will Cody with the Acton Community Spirit Award. It highlights the preservation of small-town values and outstanding service. I would also like to present you with a small gift representing a huge thank you for impacting Acton in such a positive way. You make Acton a special place to raise not only families, but apples too. So congratulations, Will, and best of luck for all of us for a promising future right here in Acton.
Speech, speech.
So I'd like to show you all of this plaque that will be displayed in our lobby, and it is the Acton Community Spirit Award awarded to Will Cody, preserving small-town values with outstanding service. And we also have another plaque that Will will be able to take home and to put in his future office. Congratulations, Will, it's a privilege.
Thank you.
Thank you so, so much, Andy. That was awesome. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations on behalf of the school committee too. It's great to see you get this award, and it's great to see your face back here in the walls of the school when we come in at night and hear your name called, 'cause he always calls your name over the...
Yeah.
...in the office. Will Cody to the office, so congratulations, Will.
Something tells me that didn't happen much when you were a student. I got lost on. That was very, very, very good.
All right, then let's move on to our consent agenda, and I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five oh. Okay, do any of you have any questions? Superintendent, have you ever, do you want to do a report now?
A few short things, sure. Just as an update, the Sanford High School graduates of Acton will be walking through this school tomorrow, right around 8:30 tomorrow morning. If anybody wants to see something fun, they line up at middle school under the building and they come through, and they go out through the old doors to the front, and then they take a group photo in front of the school sign. Get back in, and then, for the caps and gowns, full caps and gowns, they come through, and all our kids come out, and kind of cheer forms, they come through, and then they circle out and, and off they go. But it's a very, very, very exciting day, starting in the morning with us for our kids that are graduating from Sanford High School tomorrow night, so. Anybody's welcome to come see that, if you'd like to come in and high-five those kids as they come through, we're very proud of them. Monday's the last day of school for this school year, and we're gonna have the awards assembly in the morning. We're gonna start at nine o'clock with kids in the gymnasium on that day. And it is a full day. We, as you remember, we voted to make some changes in the schedule due to snow days. We usually end on a half-day, but we are ending on a whole day due to those changes that the school committee approved. I do wanna take, this isn't the last school committee of the year, we're gonna, later we're gonna find a workshop day in July, but I want you to, I want you to think a little bit about the work as a school committee, and thank you for the good work that you've done this year. I mean, going into this year, I looked at my gown, and I thought, my goodness, there's so much work to do, but if you think, think about what you accomplished this year from September to June. Teacher's contract, which was settled and done well. Feedback from everybody was that that was a good process. Support staff contract, same thing, done well and with, with great feedback from, from everybody there. Each administrator's contract that you worked with. A mission statement that I hope we'll, we'll vote on tonight, and I hope you approve. That's a ton of work. A new transportation contract. We're trying something else new, trying something new, and the support is there. And of course, every year, we have to pass a budget, and you passed the FY '20 budget, so when you're thinking back, this is, it was an extremely busy year. And these things just don't happen by themselves. I've sat in these before, and sometimes they can go on and on and on and on. But with professionalism and efficiency, you were able to take on all of that and do it well, so I just wanted to thank you for a good year.
Yes, thank you.
And as a sideline to that, we want to thank you for your leadership and for leading us through all this, all the things that we had to go through this year. Your leadership is so much appreciated, we can't tell you enough.
Appreciate it.
All the positive things that have happened.
I just wanted to mention before we go on that, going back to the high school kids, we have 15, 15 of our students that are graduating. I think there are 30 graduating, is that correct? Remember the correct number?
I think this year's graduate is 26.
26.
I believe there's 26 going out, 26 going, 17 going in.
Okay, so out of the 26 students that are graduating, we have 15 students from Acton in the top 50 of the class of probably 200 or 300, I can't remember just how many, but that's really, really speaks well for, for Acton Elementary and for our students and how well they've succeeded there. And we have two or three in the top 10.
Three.
Three in the top 10. So we're very proud of our Acton students who are graduating, and we know that they get a good foundation here at Acton Elementary School, and that's really what we're all here for, is to make sure that everybody gets a good start, and when we send them off to high school, that they're ready. And obviously, they had to have been ready to come out on the top of such a large class, so that's, that's great, we're very proud.
Now Judy, just a reminder, 'cause you didn't get to say it at the last meeting, that we did a tour of the high school.
Yes, we did do a tour.
You wanted to mention that.
Yes.
And you wanted to mention maybe when they were wondering who we were walking through the halls, right?
Yeah, we did have the opportunity, we, the school committee went through the school when it was in the process of being built. It was nowhere near being finished, and we could see that it was pretty huge, and we could see all the things that were happening. But about a month ago, we had a chance to have a guided tour through the school by the superintendent and the principal while school was in session, which was really nice. We had a chance to see what was happening all over the building, and, you know, we said, we've said before, oh, the school's gonna be great. Well, you have to really see it to realize how awesome the opportunities are there at the high school for our Acton kids now. Everything from, you know, learning how to do your hair, to selling flowers, to technology and...
Workshops.
And they have a regular little television studio there where they can film things from different, from different angles, and, and the Performing Arts Center, which is gorgeous, it's state-of-the-art. And I'm so happy that tomorrow, the weather... and we could see all the things that were happening. But about a month ago, we had a chance to have a guided tour through the school by the superintendent and the principal while school was in session, which was really nice. We had a chance to see what was happening all over the building. And you know, we've said before, oh, the school's going to be great. Well, you have to really see it to realize how awesome the opportunities are there at the high school for our Acton kids now. Everything from, you know, learning how to do your hair, to selling flowers, to technology and...
Workshops.
And they have a regular little television studio there where they can film things from different angles. And the Performing Arts Center, which is gorgeous. It's state-of-the-art. And I'm so happy that tomorrow, the weather's looking so good for their first graduation in the new high school. So if you ever get a chance and you want it, they're going to be having a little cafeteria down there too, a little cafe, put on by the food service children, the kids that are doing culinary arts. And they have a little menu where you can go in and get breakfast or lunch and go in from the outside. You don't have to go into the school. They have their own little entrance there. Same thing with the horticulture department, I believe, if you want to buy plants or flowers or something like that. So I hope you'll... Then some of the other people in Acton will, in the community, will take the opportunity sometime to go in there and just really see what our kids are getting because they go to Sanford High and this new school was great.
Well, we had the superintendent, you know, a lot of the teachers were like, who were they? Who were they? And the superintendent came out and told us all that as soon as we said it's the Acton School Committee, they were like, tell them we love the Acton kids, right?
It was a great reunion for me with a lot of...
We had to pull her out of the room.
There is one more thing I just wanted to add. Laura, you have a handout that you'd like to give the committee? This would be a good time before we transition to her, back to her with the progress monitoring. This is a piece that she needs to do with you.
Yeah, so just as part of the federal grant, state grant application process, we need to share with you what our initial or preliminary, I guess, allocations are for each of the titles and what we intend to do with those funds. So on this first page, and so that's the first page. The second page, couple of pages, is when I do the data and assessment piece in a little bit. So the Title I allocation for next year is looking like it's going to be $55,591. And that right now is earmarked for Title I staff and then any required set-asides, like we have for homeless students, a required set-aside. The Title II allocation looks like it's going to be $9,029 and that will support any professional development for the school-wide Title I and then if we can, any math intervention support. And then Title IV allocation, you have to choose one of the areas to put those funds into. You can break it up, but because of all the good work we're doing at PBIS and we still have a lot of work to do, that $10,000 for Title IV will be devoted to supporting that work, professional development, training for staff, supplies that we might need. So that's headed for Title IV. We're also required to post this information and ask for any public comment. So I'll work with Amanda on getting that posted and we'll leave that open for a couple of weeks. That grant is not due until August 1st, but I am meeting with a state, my state regional rep on Monday morning just to go over sort of the plan for these funds and to get her input and feedback because I'd like to get that grant taken care of right away because you need substantial approval before you can designate those funds for anything.
Thank you, Laura.
Yep.
Any school committee members have any questions for any of the other administrators about their reports or...
I just wanted to say that I appreciated all the information in the special ed report. There was a lot in there. Like it was a huge wrap-up of the year, I guess.
I tried to...
Yeah, I thought that was great.
And I want to thank Lori for giving us the transition projects because she's trying to stand in for Kevin Perks, you know? This was his baby. But I was just wondering, like for second grade... See, this is my thing, you know, public speaking, right? So I don't like public speaking, believe it or not. A fear of it, I don't like it, you know? And it's because I never had to speak. I remember taking it first thing in college. It was horrible for me to get up in front of people. So the big thing is like the second graders, do they get to talk to the classroom? Like what do they do with their transition project? Because I wasn't sure if they did that.
Well, what they're going to do is, right now, they're working on the group brochure. And then eighth grade has very nicely, is allowing us to have four eighth graders come down while they actually present their brochures to... So both second grades will be together and each group will present their brochure. And the eighth graders will have a checklist at that point with a scale on it and then they'll go through and finish judging them after that. But there will be a speaking piece.
Good. That's all I want to know. Start them young.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and that's the thing, you know, I mean, there's a great atmosphere of trust with this second grade and they're okay with talking in front of each other. So hopefully, that will continue as they get older. We do have standards that we are responsible for regarding public speaking.
Right, so good.
But they work with us, yes.
When we're done, we're hoping that, you know, it's going to be presented to the town. I talked to Patty about taking a handful of them up to the town hall and having them do something up there when they're ready on a Monday, Tuesday. Yeah. Hopefully, they'll come together.
I know last year, I really thoroughly enjoyed the eighth grade capstone projects that they had in the gym. Any other questions or comments, questions you have for any other administrators in the reports? Okay, then let's move on to number six. Mike and Lori, spring data for NWEAs.
Do you need the screen again?
I do, sorry.
So we just finished up the spring NWEA, so it seemed appropriate to give that to you now.
So on the handout two that I gave you, I included the Fountas and Penel benchmark data because I think that's an important piece as well because it's a different kind of assessment. It's not computer-based. It's, you know, the teacher's actually sitting there and assessing a student with their reading. So it's a different kind of an assessment and it gives us different information. So it's just as important. So... Let me see if I can do this, Mike.
You kind of have some tabs open.
A little bit? I need all those tabs open. So when we look at the reading benchmarks, so this is the Fountas and Penel and I broke it down by grade level. And you can see that kindergarteners only assessed, I think, at the end, maybe winter, but at the end of the year for sure. They don't get assessed in the fall. So it's hard to measure growth for them. But what we can measure at the end of the year is how many of them are meeting or exceeding benchmark. So our current kindergarten is eighty percent meeting or exceeding and twenty percent are still below that grade level benchmark. So this really starts to provide that information for that push-in model that we were talking about for next year. We already know who those kids are that are falling below and we'll be able to start that support right at the beginning of the year. What you will see in each of the grade levels, and I won't, you know, read them all to you because you've got the data in front of you, but ninety-five percent of first grade students showed growth. Ninety-seven percent of second graders showed growth. They may not be at benchmark yet. So some of them are still approaching, some of them are still below. But all of those students have shown growth over the year and a lot of them, not just in one level, but multiple levels moving up. And then that second grader, that one percent of the second graders did not show growth, but they were already exceeding their grade level benchmark. So they were already there. And I did this up through fifth grade because those are where we have all of those kids assessed fall and spring. And again, third grade, all, hundred percent of the third graders showed growth, ninety-five percent of the students in fourth grade, and then a hundred percent of the students in fifth grade. So, you know, the growth is happening across grade levels. There were very few kids that didn't show any growth at all.
Now, you gave out some type of paper that showed to each parent, right? Of the child, of the children that took these?
The NWEA we do. And it has graphs on it, yes. I don't, they get this information, but I'm not sure how this is sent home right till...
Well, this is for the second graders. I saw a sheet and my grandson showed progress or something.
So for Title I students, I provide, at the end of every semester, I provide where they are as far as the F and P benchmarks and then the...
But it's on that test, from that test, yeah?
Yes, yep.
And this is just a visual of that very same thing. So when you're looking at this, you can see that we've moved students. From the fall, we had about fifty-eight percent of kids meeting or exceeding. And then in the spring, we have sixty-seven, almost sixty-eight percent of the kids meeting or exceeding their grade level benchmark. So we are making those shifts across the board.
So this assessment, it's given one-on-one, as Lori said, to every, not pre-K, but every single student in the building. It assesses if they're reading accurately, how their fluency is recording and there's always a comprehension check at the end. That's a discussion, but also a written piece for many classes.
And then the NWEAs, we'll see that the average growth by grade level, this is for math. When we look across this, we can see that we had quite a bit of growth in math, which we started to target math. We used a couple of different online programs this year for students. And so we had twenty-eight average growth points in, that is grade one. So it goes all the way up through and then the last graph is, or the last bar is kindergarten. You can see the colors across the top. And again, even though kids are showing growth, we still have students who aren't reaching that grade level or meeting their growth goals that they're expected to meet. And so what this shows is, in the green, that shows all the kids, the number of kids that did meet their growth goal. And then red, even though they may have shown some growth, they may not have hit that projected growth that the assessment thought they should have. And then we have that same information for reading across, and the same here.
And grade eight's not on there because they're taking the test at the high school, correct?
Well, yeah, they didn't assess in the spring. So we couldn't, we don't have a fall-spring comparison. They did do the winter assessment, so we had a fall-to-winter comparison for them. But we didn't have a spring comparison for grade eight.
Part of the reason the eighth graders take it in the winter is it helps with placement. Placement is made in March, April.
Yep.
March, April for the eighth graders. Everybody else will be doing it in June. But the high school needs that information by March.
So then we look, fall-to-spring, and look at the whole class. Did the class meet their projected growth? And when you look across for math, kindergarten, so the dot, that little diamond that sits there, that's where they should have hit. And you can see that kindergarten, first grade, second grade, all exceeded their projected growth. Fourth grade was right on, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade was on. Third grade was the only one that fell a little bit below their projected growth as a group. So then, you know, and when you're looking at this data at this level, so now I would go to third grade and then I would start looking at, you know, subgroups. I would start looking at individual students. And that's where you really start doing another layer of digging into the data.
But then how could they do just as well, four, five, and six, and seven?
Right.
Different students.
Different students. And the other part is K to two takes a different, their test looks a little bit different than three through eight. So that also factors into this assessment. It's a different-looking assessment once they get to grade three.
So this would be the first year that the third grade is taking this different format?
Right. Yeah, it's a little more advanced. It doesn't read things to them, you know, they have to read the whole thing. So it becomes a little more different. But then you look at the reading, you know, same thing. K1, two was close to meeting their projected growth. Three was really close. Fourth and fifth did. And then six and seven, not quite there, but still some growth happening. So I'll share this a little bit with staff tomorrow just because they haven't seen end-of-the-year data. And they have access to all of this information in the NWEA portal so they can start digging in so that they can prepare for next year.
That's it for me. These graphs are really helpful in getting a quick look at where we are rather than looking at a lot of numbers. I really appreciate you guys because they really, you know, give you a quick overview, but you can still zero in on where you need to. It's great. All right, committee reports. Long range planning, nothing tonight?
We did not need.
Okay. Policy reviews. We have a little section of policies to go over again tonight.
Yep. Second read of JFCK, student use of cellular telephones and other electronic devices. Passed the first time. This is the second read.
Why do the next one?
And then the next one for the second read is JFK...
CK.
CK.
Which doesn't look good.
Doesn't look good?
No.
Okay.
Keep going.
Well, that's it for the...
Well, I just have a problem, a spelling error in A of the JFCK-dash-R. It's just K through four parents need to explain.
Oh, yes.
Need to explaining in writing is fine, but I prefer...
Need to explain.
When you make your motion, you might want to make the motion with that correction and then we won't have to do it again.
No, let's just cross the ing out.
Right, it's a second read.
Yeah, yeah, the second read, make the motion, make the...
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept this with the one change of getting rid of the ing in section A.
Yep. Okay. So the motion is to accept just the first one? Is that for the first one? Dash R, the second one.
Yes.
As a second reading?
Right. She made me say it.
The second bit.
As a second reading.
By Mary, seconded by Jeanette.
Any discussion? All in favor? And let's do JFCK also. Did you include, you didn't include that, I don't think in your motion.
Well, I read it. I mean, I told them what it was.
Yeah, I know, but I mean in Mary's motion.
She did not include that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the JFCK policy as written.
Second reading for adoption. Second?
Second.
Okay, Linda? Any discussion? All in favor? And we've got three others for a first read, correct? We have ADE, educational philosophy and mission. We have ADA, school district goals and objectives. And we have ADAA, commitment to standards for ethical and responsible behavior. Those are all first reads. So I'm assuming if I just look them over and I'll look for a motion to accept those three policies as a first read.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? So moved. Okay, let's move on to new business. And the first item is to set a date for our July workshop.
I recommend if you have time in your calendar, the week of seven to eight, nineteen, maybe in the morning at 9:00 a.m. If you want to pick a day that week that works for you.
What was the week?
Seven, July 8th, the week of any day that week in the morning if 9:00 a.m. works. Historically, we've done like a nine to noon kind of a meeting.
Okay, so that's the week of the eighth through the 12th.
The eighth through the 12th, thank you. Any of those days works?
Eighth is good.
Yeah.
The ninth would be good. It'd be after the morning.
Seven, eight. The what?
The ninth, because you need warrant signatures that day.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think that, come on, it doesn't matter.
Does the ninth work for the committee as well? 9:00 a.m.? So we're making sure we pencil it down?
For everybody?
Yep.
And I will get that agenda out to you. We have some ideas. Okay. Nice, thank you very much.
And then is the policy going to be on the second of July? The second, or no? You're going to do it through the summer?
We weren't going to do policy in July and August, but to pick it back up in September. And in lieu of a July school committee meeting, excuse me, we're thinking the workshop would be feasible and then we can report out that in our August meeting.
Yep. And between now and then, if there are things that you'd like to have discussed at that workshop, get them into John.
Well, that's going to be goals, correct?
Yeah, goals and I'll organize it. We want to talk a little bit about the presentation we had from the Hobarts as well. I'll get your thinking on that.
No comment from you people.
All right, let's go to the Acton School Mission.
Okay, this is a nice piece of work. Let's pass this around this way. Any extras? Let's pass this around this way, and any extras as they get to Kim, maybe we could get one to Jen from over there. We're gonna want this for the minutes. So, as this is being passed around, let me help fill in the blanks to what we did. One of the things I noticed in the building is there's various representations of who we are in written around the building, and some of them dated different times. Um, we had a mission statement in our handbook, and we had a different mission statement that goes out on letters that, that, you know, Judy might send out to the task. So, I went around and tried to figure out all these different mission statements and visions, and they were all from different periods of time. Um, so I met with the school committee and we talked about forming a committee to get together and just really boil it down to some simple words and some simple statements. Well, whenever you get a group of people together to write a mission statement, nothing's simple. But this group did a very, very nice job, and I, and I wanna recognize who was on this committee and, and where we are today because of them. Representing pre-K through two is Patty Damaris, three through five, Sally Puffer, six through eight, Tracy Scully, the specials, Travis Corcoran. A parent was Cassie Dobson, she's a parent of a pre-K student, also had a student come through the school system. School committee was represented by Judy Shane, and the student was Anthony Ferreira, and, and I was there as well. And it was an interesting process. Um, and with the past, if we, if we pass this tonight, my goal over the summer, working with Andy, is we'll get the old ones kinda, we'll kinda archive anything that's out there that represents us, and I'll ask Mike to change it on the website with approval of this new mission statement. And then I'll work with Kim and we'll, we'll figure out, you know, who we get for a printer and we'll have locally for the, with our copy, or we can do some nice print jobs with color for the classroom. But I'd like to have a couple of these, you know, in, in frames, at least at the front, and maybe another part, maybe in the gym of the school, that we might go to an external printer and buy a nice frame. And then I think we're gonna be good for a while. But a mission statement is never static. I think three to five years, we should look at this again. And, uh, at least now we have a record of when things have been revised. So, just to take a minute to read this, I've given enough copies. This is the good work of, of this, of the committee, and it was vetted through the faculty as well, I forgot to mention that. This, after this was written, it went to the faculty, some changes were made, and then it came back to the school committee in a weekly update, and this is the final product. So, it wasn't done just by the committee, it was vetted through, uh, everybody who works for the organization. Acton School Department's qualified and dedicated staff strive to guide students in a safe, respectful, and responsible environment by motivating and encouraging students to reach their full potential. We aspire to create well-rounded students who flourish academically, emotionally, and socially through diverse, diversified experiences. It is our goal to purposefully support and empower our students to develop skills while being imaginative and innovative, and to support them as lifelong learners who serve as competent, resilient, and dedicated members of an ever-changing, technologically-advanced society. And that wraps it up right there. So, this is what I present to you through the committee and the staff of, of Acton School Department for, for a vote tonight, and then we'll, we'll move forward with making sure we get that, get it out in the building and out there on our webpage as well.
So, I'll look for a motion to accept this as our new mission statement for the Acton School Department.
I'll make a motion to accept the, the new Acton School Department mission.
Can you second that?
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I, it's well-written, I like it.
A lot of things to take into consideration when you're doing this, you know? So, I think, I think they all got in there. All right, all those in favor? So moved. Okay, Special Education Compliance Visit from Sharon.
Yes, um, so, we received our pre-finding a couple of weeks ago, and there were a few things that we needed to fix. We got that fixed, and we got that all through from the State Department. And then they sent us a list of, uh, things that they found as kind of out of compliance and by EPs. And there were only a couple of those things. Um, one of them happens to be a high school IEP, um, so I forwarded that to the high school coordinator, and, um, that student's IEP happens to be, uh, due in September, so we'll fix that together in the fall, um, and then we'll be able to send that in. But everything else is fixed, and they were very happy with, uh, the school, and Judy came and visited and, um, introduced herself and welcomed them on behalf of the board, and I appreciated that, and...
Oh, it was a free lunch.
Yeah, free lunch.
Saw that.
No, but I, uh, as a board member, I was really pleased to hear the comments that they were making about how much they enjoyed being here and how impressed they were with the school, and they had nothing but really positive things to say about what was happening here at the school. So, that was, I was happy to hear all those things.
How often does that happen?
Every five years.
Five years?
Yeah, and there's forty school districts that they, uh, do every year, about forty school districts.
Not only is our work in special education recognized by the department as, as, as good, I mean, to have so few things to talk about is amazing. I've been through this process.
It's only just minor stuff.
There's always something, right? And it, and it's minor stuff, so, so kudos to, you know, Sharon and her staff and the department, but beyond that, they were blown away with the hospitality. She knows how to throw a gathering. We got Andy to do over room one-twenty-three, it looked awesome, and we just, they were...
Ollie took care of the food.
Several times, thank you for the welcome, and it was just really nice, so good job, real good job.
Very nice.
Okay, thank you, Sharon.